All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the April 8th School Committee meeting. We'll start with a roll call. When I call your name, please say yes if you are here. Steve Bjork?
Yes, I am here.
Jen Bryson, yes. M.J. Burns?
Yes.
Jesse Fennelly?
Yes.
Joe Newhouse?
Yes.
David Ragsdale?
Yes.
Jay Samaha?
Yes.
Great. So we are actually going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me in the pledge. Do we stand?
I mean, I think so.
Okay, I'm standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic. Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. We didn't practice that out there, so I get better at that.
That was harder than I expected.
I should have put my camera.
I just put my flag back outside the other day. I'm glad I hung it up for this. I wasn't expecting that.
We'll start with item three, approval of items by consensus. We have approval of minutes February 26th, March 19th, and March 25th, 2020. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Seconded, Mr. Fennelly. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Is that over? Is there a hand?
Are we handed?
We're handed.
Yes, that works for me.
Thank you. As long as you can see it's all. Next, we have approval of Wilmington Educational Foundation grant, the Joanne Benton Grant for Educators Exploration, in the amount of $2,800. We do have a memo on that. And I will quickly just read who is being awarded this grant. And then if someone could make the motion, that would be great. So a copy of the memo from the Wilmington Education Foundation, awarding the following two staff members with the Joanne Benton Educators Exploration Grant in the total amount of $2,800. Congrats to Kristin Taza, grade-two teacher at Wilburn Street Elementary School. The exploration of the Glacier National Park, linking evaluation science to the science curriculum and traditions from the social studies curriculum. And she will journal her experience as part of the writer's workshop curriculum. And our other recipient is Bonnie Garazi, grade-four teacher at West Intermediate School, to attend a mindfulness retreat in Oregon to deepen her understanding and practices of mindfulness to re-enter the classroom better able to tackle challenges from various viewpoints in the amount of $1,500. So congratulations and thank you very much to WEF. Would someone like to make the motion? Sorry, I can't see you. Well, I have 17 things open. Mr. Bjork?
I'll second the motion.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Tristan, are you good?
Yes, thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Next, we have 3C, some warrants, G419, R224, L62, 63, 64, 65, FS27, 28, 29, and 30. Is there a motion? Bjork, seconded by Mr. Fennelly. All in favor? Aye, thank you.
Aye.
Yep, aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Warrants, we have payroll ending 3/25/2020 and 4/8/2020. I'll take that separately. Is there a motion?
Move to proof.
Ragsdale, thank you. Seconded by Mr. Bjork. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much. We have CBO9. Is there a motion? Mr. Samaha, thank you. Seconded by Mr. Ragsdale. All in favor? You see that, Tristan? We have two abstentions.
Yes, thank you.
And then we have warrants sped 20 and 21. Is there a motion? Mr. Fennelly, thank you. Mr. Samaha, thank you. All in favor? And that is three questions. Mrs. Dixie, are you, is that good?
Yes, thank you. Typing in, unmuting.
Thank you very, sorry. Thank you very much. All right. Next, we have our superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Good evening, everybody, and thank you so much again for all of your flexibility in making this possible and happen. There's a pretty good rhythm to this right now. So thank you for making this possible. Superintendent's report tonight is a little bit longer. There are a few items that have backlogged a little bit, given our interruptions in some of our meetings. And so some of them are from previous meetings that you might recall seeing on previous agendas, and others have been updated along the way, and a few more added more recently. So bear with me, if you will, as we sort of work through what seemed to be the most prominent to share. And then later, under new business, I certainly will provide you with a number of updates around COVID-19. So first, item number 4A, the Apple Institute. In the packet and for members of our community who might be interested in following along, you'll see a memo from Ms. Brown McGrand and Ms. Ebert from our Student Support Services. And this is one of those examples that's an item that's a little bit dated. And also sadly, probably will become a little bit problematic in ultimately our participation, given the ongoing health crisis. But I did want to bring to the school committee's attention and to our community the intention that we, as a district, had to try and participate in what really, I can say from actual personal experience, having been a participant in this institute previously, I think would be a great opportunity for Wilmington. The Federation for Children with Special Needs provides, I think at least annually, maybe more than once a year, a program that they, the acronym is "APPLE". And as you'll see in the memo, advancing parent professional leadership and education. And thanks to Leann and Alice, who provided a new overview of what the intention of this program is. It really is a way to enhance the collaboration and working relationships between a district's CPAC and the district itself, or the leadership. And you can see a number of the purposes that are in this memo that are outlined, from leadership to structure and organization, parental support, and many other areas. And in my conversation with both Leann and Alice, we collectively thought that this just seemed like a really important and a great endeavor to try and pursue. And so things have obviously got interrupted here for us. And ultimately, as things continue to play out, it does not perhaps seem right now that the institute will be offered in the middle of May, as was originally planned. However, a recent visit to the website of the Federation for Children, just a couple of days ago, they indicated that they are hopeful to be able to reschedule this for the fall. And so I bring this to your attention just for, really for informational purposes, but for all of our committee and beyond all of our community. We think that this is a great endeavor to pursue, one that will only benefit all of us as we move forward. And so I just wanted to bring to your attention the intention that we had to participate in that. Item 4B, elementary school placement and school supply lists. Also, also an item that has a more current date here of April 8th, but something that was intended to bring before you a couple of meetings ago. One of the things that I have certainly over my year and a half in Wilmington come to learn is sometimes the challenge around specifically student placement at the elementary level. And we have, in Wilmington anyway, approached this, not unlike other districts, where the placement of student information is given out to families and is finalized at the end of the school year, so in June. That has some elements of tension, if you will, sometimes to it. And by that, what I mean is sometimes there are a variety of things that happen behind the scenes since the, from the time in which school comes to an end until in which school opens that can involve the movement of students in or out, the change in a teacher, perhaps a last-minute resignation, and a host of other things that in between can be a little more problematic, quite frankly, in terms of necessarily maintaining the status quo that was thought to be in place at the end of June. I am aware of other districts, and I certainly have personal experience as well with this, that delaying that class placement information until the 1st of August allows for that additional month of time to make sure that everything is in place, that the situation or the context has not changed, and that we with confidence can move out those class placements, knowing that nothing else between that first part of August and the end of August should change. And so I wanted to share this with you for informational purposes, and also more broadly beyond with our community, that I've had a number of discussions with our elementary principals. They are on board with this. I could tell you that they are supportive of this. And we know that this will be a shift or a change for our Wilmington community, hence the reason to start to socialize this intention now for going into next year. The latter part of this memo, though, is very much connected to this. We understand, and I understand well as a former principal, that it's not only about sharing with a family and a young person which class or teacher that they are going to be in, but also what are the supplies that they need. And that's something that is not at all unique to Wilmington and one that I know that I've grappled with in other communities as well. And part of this commitment also is to take this opportunity and to take stock of the things that we request for families, for families to purchase, and make sure that we can align those requests in a way that is similar across our schools, and also to be able to provide this information, at the very least, at the end of the school year, so families can pursue acquiring those things at their leisure over the course of the summer. So I'll pause on this, and forgive me for not doing so after the first item, knowing that there could be some questions. And maybe I'll just pause here and take anything that you might have on either item 4A or 4B.
Mrs. Burns?
I had a question with regards to the class roster. Does that give ample opportunity for staff to become familiar with which children in their classes are on IEPs and 504s, considering that's such a short, I mean, not to say that there's any difference with knowing in June, but I just wanted to ensure that there's ample time for staff to be familiar with the makeup of their classrooms.
Great question, and thank you for it. So what I would say to that is that behind the scenes, what does not change is the typical timeframe in which this work and our staff would be engaged in making the tentative placements. And I think that that's a word that I would add in here, tentative. That, just to be clear, that the placement information wouldn't be done the end of July. It would be done at a similar time period in very late spring. But tentative in the sense that if something were pressing that necessitated immediately, a couple of children moving from one class to another, that could be done. And that could be done behind the scenes so as not to, we know, and I know well, that after a placement is made, and that's announced to a family and a student, it's very difficult to make that change after that. And sometimes there are, not always, but sometimes there are circumstances extenuating such that that would still have to happen. So we're trying to avoid that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Are there other questions from the committee? 4A or 4B? Mr. Ragsdale?
I'd just like to quickly comment that I really hope that we have the opportunity to participate in the Apple Institute. Reading not only through their memo, but also the sort of the linked brief that they, that the institute itself provides, which is linked in the memo, seems like a really, really solid program and something that would be a great opportunity for us to, you know, to strengthen, to strengthen our CPAC. So I'm very hopeful that we have the opportunity to participate in that. Regarding the class placement, the memo says that this early August placement is going to be consistent with the middle school. And I just want to sort of verify that that is definitely the intention for the middle school, because my experience has been that middle school, whether it's house placement or scheduling, does not come out until the very end of August, almost up to the start of school. And so I don't know if that's an intention to change and make that early in the, earlier in the month, or if that's not consistent with how it's been.
So thank you for the, both questions. Let me first start with the class placement. And Brian, if you, if there's anything you might add, not to put you on the spot there, but I have to admit to you that I was, sorry to say, not aware that middle school placement went out as late as it did. My understanding, while not exactly necessarily in line with the high school, is that generally speaking, and at least in the recent past, but perhaps I'm wrong about this, when the high school opened up its access to the student portal, or parent portal, if you will, and schedules were released, that was approximately the same time that we were doing that for middle school. But perhaps I'm incorrect about that. Brian, are you, would you kind of clarify to that?
I do think, I can't speak to previous years, but I know that this particular year, it was very late. And I think that was attributed to the leadership change there. And they were doing some work behind the scenes with the schedule that ended up making it much later than we would want it to be. So I can't speak to sort of historically, maybe it's always been that way, but I can speak to this past year. I know it was, it was much later than we would want. I don't think there's a reason why we couldn't align these to all be around the same time, though.
And part of, part of the, not to get too far into the weeds as well, but part of the thinking in a uniform way, uniform meaning pre-K to 12, is aligning for the release of this information, the placement information, at the beginning, the beginning part of August. Also coupling with that, the vast amount of information we know has to be forthcoming to families, too. Student handbooks, all of the myriad of things that's not lost upon any of us that we ask our families to read. Our thought is to be able to push this out as a, as a, as a package, if you will. And so as Brian spoke there, it does, I recall now what he was talking about this past year, which I think was an exception. It would, it would be my, it would be my hope and my expectation that there's no reason why we could not shoot for the beginning part of August for, really for all of our grades across the board. The Apple Institute, I'll just make a quick comment again, as I mentioned, having been a participant in that, I would, I would, I would equate that with a very small-scale strategic plan effort. And the, I think it was a two-day, maybe three-day, I can't recall. It was a few years ago now that, when I had the pleasure to be a part of that. And it really was sort of strategic planning for our CPAC, building and district leadership, and just our community as a whole. So I, too, am hopeful that we'll be able to offer, offer this, they'll be able to offer this in the fall when we get back to, hopefully, a degree of normalcy.
And then one quick comment on the school supply lists. You know, this, this is a small thing, but I think it is going to be welcomed gratefully by families all over Wilmington, because with the individual classroom lists, you know, it's basically another thing that you can expect sort of mid-August is for Facebook to light up with people, you know, wondering if there are going to be any supplies left in Target or Staples, once they finally, finally get the school supply lists. So just these, these little quality-of-life things really do make a difference for families to have all summer to get what you need, is, I think, going to be welcomed. And I think that as many, as many little pain points like this that we can identify and try to fix, I think we should do that as well. But this is a small thing, but a good thing.
Thank you. Okay. Not any other questions? If I may, I'll move on. 4C is the Assistant Superintendent search. So in your packet, you'll notice, and this memo has been updated. We've adjusted somewhat, but again, an item that was here previously, a few, a meeting or two ago. As the committee's aware, Dr. Regan is moving on from his post at the end of this school year. And so the district has launched for a search for his replacement. You'll find this memo similar to other memos that you've seen for leadership searches in the past, an overview of the process, the intention around what this process will look like. And I'll comment on this a little bit more in a moment with the West Intermediate search. The search committee and the composition that, as always, at least I've done in the past, and I will always continue to do to try and bring it to the committee for your thoughts. This wasn't able to quite happen in the same way because of our challenges with meetings in the last few weeks. But you can see the members of the search committee, who I can tell you actually this afternoon, got together again with our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Andrea Stern Armstrong. They have met at least once, maybe twice, virtually. A great group who were active again this afternoon, working on picking out or selecting candidates from, I think, a pool of a little bit over 40 in total, to invite in for interviews, if you are not invite in, but invite for interviews. The timeline is the last page in this, and for the most part, we're on course. We had to adjust it slightly, as you can probably imagine or appreciate. But the meetings to finalize candidate interviews is, was today. And interviews will, they'll move into interviewing next week. So of course, I'll keep you apprised of this as we, as we move forward. The next item is the West Intermediate search update, and that is item 4D, that is in your packet as well. And we bring to your attention an update on the West Intermediate search. And this is the announcement of our two finalists. So despite all of this school closure that we're all grappling with in different ways, we are committed to continuing our efforts around hiring. And that includes all positions, but certainly not the least of which would be our leadership positions. You know that we went into the break, the break in service, as we knew it, the middle of March, with the West Intermediate search form, that group form. They continue to work very hard through virtual meetings, with Ms. Stern Armstrong coordinating that. They met as a committee, and for all intents and purposes, their work resembled exactly what would have happened in person. And we're getting a little bit of a sense, at least I am, through the Zoom platform, of the ability to do that fairly well. After a number of hours, many hours, of interviewing candidates, the group identified three candidates to move forward in the process. This memo had to be edited yesterday, because one of the three finalists, unfortunately, took a position in another district. And so, so we now have two. And Ms. Paula Jones, as well as Mr. Edward Foster, are the two finalists for the West Intermediate School Principal Search. I can tell you that in an effort to try and keep pace with all of this, we are, we continue to move forward into tomorrow. Tomorrow will be site visits, air quotes here, site visits to Wilmington, where our finalists will have a chance, just like we would in any other principal search, have a chance to meet with staff, have a chance to meet with our principal group, our central office team, myself, and a couple of other meetings that are specific and an intention to try and gather feedback around, around these two folks. We also just take this plug and opportunity for our community members. We pushed out information to Beltwell, Shawshene, and the West Communities, and invited those parent guardians to attend a meet and greet, if you will, again, virtually, for these two candidates tomorrow, late afternoon. I forget the exact times, but we have made that information available. And just like we will, we would have done in any other search, I'll be looking to gather information from all of the various stakeholders that are meeting with these candidates to help and inform, you know, a final decision. We're also in the mix right now of trying to schedule site visits to their home districts, and that would take place at the very beginning of next week. So with C and D, I'll pause there, with two more items to go, and if there are any questions that members of the committee might have.
Mr. Samaha?
Yeah, I do, I was just, and this is, I guess, just, just going forward with any search committee, especially for, you know, for the Assistant Superintendent. One of the things that I noticed with the teachers that were selected was there was no real representation from the middle or the high school on that committee. So I'm just, I mean, it might have been that there just wasn't anybody whose schedules allowed them to, and I know, you know, forming those committees is a hard thing. But I think that, you know, going forward, it would be, you know, it's really ideal to have representation from, from all the levels, especially at, like, for somebody who's going to be, you know, district.
I could not agree more. And I will tell you that perhaps surprisingly, or maybe not, and I don't know that this was a victim of circumstance with COVID-19, but we, we sometimes, when we put out these notices and invitations for people to volunteer, don't always get a big pool. And that was the case here. And when we don't get that, we make an effort to sort of pound the pavement and reach back out. And we did that here. And unfortunately, we still fell a little short. So we, we, we don't sort of raise a white flag immediately, but, you know, ideally, I could not agree with you more. I think broad representation is critical. And unfortunately, we just came up a little bit short in this one.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none, Dr. Brand?
Two final things. I'll take the first one, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Regan for 4F. 4E, Director Athletics search. This is also an oldie, but a goodie. This was in the packet some time ago. It seems like probably about a year ago. But it was at the end of February, and that was leading up to the first part of March, in which I was going to share with you the announcement of our finalist, who is to become the next Director of Athletics in Wilmington. Ms. Mia Musio, who's currently the interim athletic director in the Wayman Public Schools. And I know this is sort of old news, but again, in the spirit of trying to be consistent and making sure the members of our community were aware of the, are aware of the happenings going on in the district, this is here that highlights her appointment. We're looking forward to her beginning on July 1st. I know that prior to the shutdown and going into the next number of weeks, she has already had a number of conversations with Ed Harrison, our interim director. So we're excited about her arrival, and we're looking forward to her beginning on July 1st. So I just wanted to share that with the Wilmington community. And then finally, 4F, the Student Opportunity Act. This also was an item that we had full intention to bring to the committee and to the community a couple of meetings ago. That did not happen. And although the original deadline, which was April 1st, has, the commissioner is seeking a modification to, although we don't have final word as to what the new deadline will be, we didn't want this to sort of sit on the back burner and become caught up in a backlog of other items. So we did want to take just a couple of minutes to revisit this with you. And Brian is going to take it from here in terms of providing you with a bit of an update on our, on our thinking and where we're considering going in the next number of weeks. But Brian?
First, I'm going to just share my screen, so feel free to minimize it if it gets in your way and you don't want to, want to look at it. But I'm going to, for the purpose of showing folks, can you, can you see the presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so just to sort of move along about, I think it was two meetings ago. It was right after we had closed, I think it was March 11th. We were planning on bringing the draft plan to the school committee with the intention that two weeks after that, which was around March 25th, whenever that meeting was going to be, you would be taking a vote on this for an April 1 deadline. So that deadline has been extended. We don't have a date yet from the department, but April 1 is no longer the deadline. A few districts did submit, but we were actually told it would be beneficial if we didn't. I think the department is just not ready to take these in, so they asked us kindly to hold off. So we did that happen. But just as a little recap and for the public, we are a minimum A district, so our Chapter 70 increase will be based on the $30 per student. And that comes to about $96,600 next year, less than 1%. And as I said to the committee back, I think in late February, this is really a typical increase. So while the SOA sounds like it's a windfall of money, it's, it's not for districts like ours. We will see, you know, an average amount of Chapter 70 money increased, and that is inclusive of SOA money. And the chart in the bottom here just shows your last, the last two fiscal years, and then what we project for next fiscal year, which is inclusive of the SOA. So the expectations that we'd submit a three-year report, excuse me, a three-year plan by April 1st. It's now been extended. The activities must be evidence-based. It should not be a comprehensive strategic plan, and it has to address four commitments, which will be the basis of this presentation tonight, so I won't list them now. And the biggest piece is engaging the community when developing the plan. There are 17 evidence-based programs that the state identified. There are, there are nine of them listed here that I typed in that connect with our strategic plan. And the one in blue, which is inclusion, co-teaching for students with disabilities in ELL, that's the one that we're focusing our plan on, based on what we think is the best match for us right now. So I mentioned the four commitments. The first asks districts to answer the question as to which subgroups we will focus on, essentially. We're going to look at students with disabilities specifically at the middle school. Not that we're not supporting students across all buildings, but for the purpose of this plan, we're going to focus on that subset of students, students with disabilities at the middle school. And we're going to look at their achievement, both using MCAS and... And we're going to look at their achievement, both using MCAS and local data, and their growth using MCAS data. The second commitment asks us to identify what program we will use or adopt, deepen, or continue the language that they use to help close the achievement and opportunity gaps. As I said a couple of slides ago, we're focusing on this inclusion, co-teaching piece specifically for disabilities, focusing that at the middle school. And as you know, our budget includes the addition of a full-time special education inclusion teacher at the middle school. We will also focus some funds towards professional development related specifically to inclusion and co-teaching. The second part of this asks about what resources. And you can see on this slide that in year one, we're looking at the inclusion teacher, and that's the budgeted amount, and then additional money in professional development. That does go above the Chapter 70 increase, but this is, again, money that's already in our budget. So some of this will be attributed to, you know, Chapter 70 SOA funds. The rest would be, you know, it's picked up in the local budget anyway. It's all it's all together anyhow. So the 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 plan itself does not have to have a number that matches exactly, you know, the amount of money that you're that you're getting in aid. So it can go above and beyond, that's fine, as long as the local budget is covering that. And these are items that are already budgeted. Commitment three asks districts to identify what metrics we will use to monitor success. So you can see here, they gave us outcome metrics from the department. And of those, we chose to look at the percentage of our students with disabilities meeting or exceeding expectations on ELA, MCAS, also with math, MCAS, that's number two, and then looking at the growth percentiles for ELA and math for students with disabilities. In addition to that, in Wilmington, we use iReady at the middle school for reading. So we're going to use iReady data data as additional, as an additional metric. And then we will be selecting various math unit assessments from Envisions, which is our math program at the middle school, to find some math local data. So those are the metrics that we will use to sort of see how students are doing in terms of their achievement and their growth. And then the fourth commitment asks us to talk about how we are going to include families in the process, not not specifically about designing the SOA, but how you use, you know, incorporate families into the plan itself as you as you roll out the plan over the next three years. So Glenn mentioned the Apple piece. This is something that we tied into this plan. So we're very hopeful that that is, in fact, up and running in the fall, and we're able to engage in that work. We're looking to connect with a keynote speaker that we would pay to come into the district to sort of kick off what we hope to be a year-long PD focused on inclusive practices. We're going to target some efforts at the middle school to increase attendance of parents with students with disabilities at our parent and teacher conferences. And then we are targeting some parent coffees at the middle school and some parent information nights focusing on special education topics. The information nights would be advertised to the whole district, but they would be mostly secondary focused, but they would, you know, any parent would be able to come. And then just in closing, before I take, we take questions, you know, what would we do next? We would want to share this, the draft plan, which should be in your packets with the full staff. We need to find a way to have public input. The school committee would hopefully, if if we can, would vote for it at their next meeting at the end of April. That would just put us in a good position for once the Department of Education identifies a deadline. We'd want to be in a position to submit. And then obviously, that's the next bullet. And then we sit and we wait to see the state of the FY '21 state budget. We know that this crisis that's happening right now, there's a real likelihood that there could be an impact on, well, there will be an impact on state revenues and how that will impact school budgeting. This is going to be a question that we'll have to be ready to address. The the public input piece, in a in a memo that I put together, I sort of outlined two options that came to mind, and we're hoping the committee will talk about this tonight and help us with some guidance on this. But we could, at the April meeting, the next April meeting, we could put it on the agenda as a sort of standalone public input agenda item, and people could weigh in on the plan. We, of course, would publish it first on the website so people could look at it. We could also push it out on the website and send an email out to families to say, here's a link to it, take a look, and then provide either a survey or an email address that they can provide feedback on the plan that way. If we add it to the school committee agenda on the 29th, we obviously would need to push the vote off to the next meeting just so we would have time to, you know, to hear public comment and incorporate anything that we think is appropriate to incorporate. But that, that, of course, would be flexible. And I just want to say one other thing. We are allowed to submit the plan without a school committee vote. They, we need it eventually, but they're allowing, at least when the old deadline was April 1st, they were allowing districts to submit without the vote yet, knowing that it's coming. So if for some reason they say it's it's due X date, and we don't have a meeting lined up, we can still submit, so we're in compliance. And then they would just wait for us to get the vote from the committee once we had the time to do that. I don't know if I missed anything, Glenn, feel free to jump in.
No, Brian, thank you. No, I think that 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 really, it covers it. It it's still, you know, it seems very secondary to obviously everything that is going on, but we also want to make sure that we are complying with what we mean to as a district. We're confident that this plan is is thoughtful. We've talked before about the reality of the fiscal aspect to it, but nevertheless, it's something that's still, it it it's more than compliance, that's a part of it, but it's also making sure that we are thoughtful in in terms of how we can fulfill this this need for our district going forward. And we think this is a good plan to to do so.
Questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Samaha?
I'll I'll say first off that I I really like the idea of 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 going with inclusion and 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 co-teaching. I think that's going to just be something that's really going to impact teachers and students and learning like right away. So I think that's good. I think that it's, you know, we think about, you know, a couple of months ago, we had the Walker Report, and we and we got the results from from that. I think this connects directly to that as well. So I I'm I'm excited about this. I think it's a step in the right direction. I'm a huge proponent of inclusion, and I think the co-teaching model, I think, is is really the best way to go. So I'm just, I'm I'm excited about this. I think it's a, I think it's a, it's a good, it's a great, great plan.
Thank you. Mrs. Burns, you have a comment, but I think you're on mute. Tristan, can you unmute?
Thank you. I don't, I don't have a comment, I just couldn't comment. I couldn't unmute myself, she had me.
Okay, so no comment, but now you're unmuted. Okay.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Oh, I can.
Oh, Mr., let me go to Mr. Ragsdale, I'll come back, Mr. Samaha, Mr. Ragsdale?
So I I think that this is a very solid plan, and, you know, I think it hits all the pieces that the plan is supposed to, and and, you know, sets us up for a good, a good metric to, that that aligns with our strategic plan and something that we would want to be getting to anyway. Regarding the public input, I would favor making it as easy as possible to collect input from the community. So I would favor both pushing out the plan and a communication and soliciting feedback through either a survey or just a, an address for people to email feedback to, and also allowing an in-person comment at the April 29th meeting, so that whichever one is easier for someone who would like to comment on the plan to do so, and then push off the vote to the subsequent meeting after April 29th.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else want to make a comment about that? I agree with Mr. Ragsdale. I think that makes good sense to offer it soon as possible, and then to also have us have some time for public comment at the April 29th meeting, which would then push off the vote to our our first meeting in May. Mr. Finley?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I would agree with that as well. I think the the more chance you get for feedback, the better. So I'm in agreement with with that as well.
Thank you. All right.
So we'll we'll work on getting that up on the web and getting a message out to people right away.
Thank you so much, Dr. Regan and Dr. Brand, we appreciate it. So that brings us to item five, which is public comment. And Steve Bjork, you're going to organize this?
Yeah, sure, I'll I'll carry the ball on this one. So in an interest to maintain some structure and organization to this new way of doing things, we enjoy listening to public comment. We have posted a link for participants to submit comments or to at least get in line to offer comments. And so at the time of public comments, the school committee will call each participant's name in order for their comment submission. And they will be unmuted by the school committee recording secretary to make their comment. Should participates, participants be unable to attend the Zoom call to submit comments in person, they may submit comments to be read. And we do have one comment to be read. But what I'll do is first, I will call the individual who has to be recognized. Who is in attendance? Was that?
He's here, actually.
Oh, Elizabeth Lawrence, is she not in attendance?
She has not joined the meeting.
Okay. All right. So at this time, then I'll read the comment that was submitted by Allison Hurst. And her comment is, please consider investing more heavily into online learning for our children. It is important, especially now, to come up with a comprehensive plan to serve all students. Other states around us were able to implement remote learning fairly quickly, and I am hopeful we can leverage what they have learned during our planning process. I certainly understand there is no one size fits all for students, but being able to provide structured learning plans for parents would be very helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Bjork.
Thank you.
All right, and that brings us, there is no old business, so we'll go right into new business. And our first item is COVID-19 update, Dr. Brand?
Thank you. It it seemed only fitting to to have this under this section of your agenda. And what certainly for the at least foreseeable future will will be a standing item of need to provide the, provide the committee, as well as obviously our community, with a number of updates. And so that's, that's what you see before you tonight, and I'll try and move through these as as quickly as possible and and certainly also pause for any specific questions. So first off, a couple of items that I'll draw attention to in your packet and I'll also speak to. Seven A, the Commissioner's guidance around April vacation. So not necessarily in any particular order, but just these are the way that they are listed. So for members of the community, and of course, the other committee in the school committee packet for this evening, there is a copy of the memo that recently came out by Commissioner Riley, who is the Commissioner for the Department of Education in Massachusetts. This is a topic that has begun in the last, I would say, week or so to certainly generate some interest, curiosity, and question around districts throughout the Commonwealth. And that is exactly, given the situation before everybody, what are the plans unfolding for April vacation? I would say that from what I can tell and my knowledge, most, maybe not all, but most districts have a week of April vacation planned in their school year calendar. And certainly Wilmington, as you know, is one of those districts. The guidance from the Commissioner, as noted in his memo, is that any decision to alter, change, deviate from the April vacation, if a district were to have that, is a local decision as to whether or not the district wishes to keep the planned April school vacation this year or to or to entertain plans to to alter or deviate that. He, in his memo, as you'll as you'll note there, declared that it's a local decision, and certainly as school committees establish the school year schedule or calendar, it's consistent with the respective standards outlined in the student learning time regulations. And so because of all of that, and within those standards, school committees may adjust the school committee calendar, or sorry, the school year calendar, to meet the needs of its community, and also of note, subject to collective bargaining is applicable. And then the final, a couple of pieces in in this memo that I think are worthy to note. Any any district that might consider deviating from their planned April vacation does need to keep at the at the beginning of that week at the Patriots Day. That is a statewide legal holiday, as I'm sure everyone's aware. 180 days, which is the required days of instruction, as you know, certainly would still prevail in the state, regardless of any adjustment for the April vacation. And if we were to maintain our April vacation and and take the four days as as vacation, as they're currently planned, then remote learning would continue on April 27th. And so this is here this evening to, you know, to bring to your attention this and to seek your thoughts around how as a district we might proceed relative to to April vacation.
Mrs. Burns?
I, I, the MAS C list server has been lighting up all week with regards to districts reporting and as to the decision that their districts have taken with regards to working through April break as opposed to, you know, maintaining it as a school vacation week. And, you know, in consideration, in thinking about the timeframe, it, you know, it took for us to figure out what Governor Baker was going to hand down with regards to the closing of schools and things of that such. I wasn't sure if that time, in order to, you know, for us to organize and push out resources, if that would be, that that really, really wasn't ample learning time, where we are moving now in different formats with different classes. I personally would like to see classes continue through the the April break personally. I, my question to you, though, is have we, A, used up all our snow days? It just seems, and does that replace, I mean, I know we we have 180 days we stay within. Does that kind of kill out those snow days that we initially took?
Yeah, so good question. So so the snow days are not a part of this consideration. And so just to, just to clarify, it does get a little confusing, I realize. Our our last day of school right now is scheduled for June the 19th. And that takes into account, if I remember correctly, where the, where three snow days. So our 180th day right now is scheduled for June the 19th. And and so probably to state the obvious, that includes four days of vacation during April break. If as a district, and this would apply for any district, if as a district the decision were to be made to to convert, if you will, for lack of a better word, any one of those four days of vacation or holiday during the April break, then that would correspondingly adjust our end of school. So for example, if a decision was to use one of those April days, let's just say hypothetically, for remote learning, and the other four days in that April break were continued to be holiday, then our last day of school would be June the 18th instead of June the 19th. And similarly, if we applied all four days to to your earlier thought, then we would back up our last school day to June the, was that the 15th? I don't have a calendar in front of me, but June the 15th, I think it would, it would be the last day.
So can I ask for some additional clarification, please? So the the days that you called, that you had called, I think it was, I don't know if it was a Thursday and Friday, do those not, are those, reaching for the word, are they absolved from those school days? Or, I mean, I didn't know if they met the cutoff that the state had allowed schools to close when we initially were going for one week. Do you remember the initial time when you closed schools on the Thursday and Friday?
I do, the March, March 11th and 12th, I think, is when that was.
I I have the dates, Glenn, if you'd like.
Paul, please, yeah.
So we had no school snow days, if you will, on December 2nd, 3rd, and 17th. And then March 12th and 13th, we were closed. So those were kind of our five snow days. So the last day of school was now June 19th, which if we had gone back to school on March 16th, that would have been our date anyway. And and the Commissioner had come out and said, no, school has to go past the 185th scheduled, a calendared day, which includes the five snow days.
I see.
So after the 13th of March, we essentially used up all five, or we had our five snow days. So any days we take during April vacation. So any days we take during April vacation, which are not part of the calendar as, as school days, would, you know, back off the June 19th date, so we'll go to June 18th, 17th and so forth.
Okay. Thank you, that helps, appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Mr. Bjork.
Yeah, I'm seeing the other side of it. I know we went a good deal of time without offering remote learning. And so people are eager to work through April vacation. However, I think that assuming that we're able to get back into the buildings at all, I think every day we spend in that building is far more valuable than every day we have of remote learning. So I would hate to get back in the buildings at some point in May and then get out on June 15th as opposed to June 19th. That's, that's my thought in the matter.
Thank you. Are there other comments, Mr. Ragsdale?
Just quickly to echo Mr. Bjork, that was my thinking as well, that, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. If we, if we do get back into schools on May 4th, we'll have been out seven weeks and plus a couple of days for us from that previous week. But there's another seven weeks of school left until June 19th, and we may not be back on May 4th. But I again agree that I would hate to lose in-person days if we think there's any realistic possibility that we actually do get back into schools before the end of the year. You know, the in-person days are, you know, going to be so much more valuable than the remote learning days. Of course, we don't know if we're going to do that, which is why it's a hard decision. But, but I, but my thinking mirrors his.
Mrs. Newhouse.
Yeah, you know, it's kind of hard to make the decision without, I mean, if we knew we were going back to school or not going back, because part of me feels like we're just getting into the remote learning this week. It's just starting to be rolled out next week will be a full week and then we're going to cut it off again. And there's just no consistency for the kids or families or teachers, which is making it hard.
I wonder if I could add something. So I am sort of in agreement with Mr. Bjork and Mr. Ragsdale, but I also hear that other side of we've just had so much time that has been somewhat unstructured. And so now we're finally, I think this week we're kind of iron, it's still, we're still in process, we're still figuring all this out. So then to have this week, we're kind of ironing out the kinks and the next week we have one, then all of a sudden we're off for a full week. I wonder if there's not a compromise we could make where we definitely have the Monday off. Maybe we have the Friday of that week off to kind of, but then we come in in the middle of the week. I also don't love, with that, part of my thinking is, I don't like the idea of having our last day be on a Monday because I feel that that's just an awkward day to come back in for after the weekend when the, so I wonder if we couldn't push it a little bit to at least get to that Wednesday or Thursday. So I don't know if it makes sense to keep some consistency, but also not have us finish up on the 15th. But I could, I could go in either way because I agree, if we do get back in sometime in May, I would hate to think that we lost those days because we worked through April break.
I agree, that's a great idea, Mrs. Bryson, that's, I like that idea about kind of splitting it down the middle, personally.
What are your thoughts?
So are you thinking of that we have Patriots' Day and then perhaps Tuesday and Wednesday off? But then we're back in session on Thursday and Friday, so there's a smaller chunk of vacation. We lose a little bit less momentum and then we're back in the swing of things.
Something like that, or we have Monday and Friday off and we work Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I mean, I'm, I don't know if I'm, if I have a real thought on it. But I feel like to have them, to have my own children doing something on that Wednesday and it makes good sense to sort of keep up with some of the schedules that, that parents and guardians are trying so hard to, to coordinate in their homes. And so to take a full week, I think could be, could be a little bit messy and hard for, for families. Other thoughts on that? Dr. Brand, do you have a thought?
Well, it's easy to agree with all of the above, and I mean that sincerely. And in, for what it's worth, sort of monitoring some of our other districts not too far away. It's a small sample size of what I've seen, but their, their plans are largely reflective of what you've all articulated, that there's pros and cons for taking the week off, to not take the week off. And other, also some districts are talking about, I've been using the word hybrid, you know, a combination of days off and days engaged in remote learning. And I do completely agree with the comments that what I think makes this really difficult is not knowing sort of our final fate, if you will, for returning to school or not. So it is, I mean, I do think you, I would suggest that you would want to render a decision around this. I also just would point out again that it's something that, the sample break is a part of the collectively bargained agreement. And so we would, we would have to engage in discussion with the WTA. In my conversation with the president earlier today, I have no reason to believe that this could not in any way be worked out. It certainly could. We have a sense from staff that staff are also reflective of sort of your mindset too. And many indicating a preference to continue to press on through the break. And actually quite a few staff, so I just bring, I point that out as well too. It is a thought that maybe you wish to consider gathering feedback and I think we could do so quickly from the community. That's, that's a thought. And if you were interested in doing that, then we could certainly execute that pretty quickly if that would be helpful for, for you to make a final decision. I would say though, that in terms of timing of this, by no means was it intentional for you to take a vote or take any action on this this evening. I know it's just coming to you and in part, this is sort of reflective of the larger norm that we're in, that this guidance was just, you know, just put out from the commissioner recently. But I would suggest that we would need to gather any information additionally that you might want and then pull together at least a quorum of the committee at the very beginning of next week to finalize any kind of decision on this. If you wanted to stick with April break as it's currently planned, you would not need to take any action. It's already scheduled. If you were going to deviate from that though, you would take that, take that change.
Okay, thank you. Any other thoughts, Mrs. Burns?
I, I like that idea because I think gathering feedback, it would be most helpful in rendering this decision. But my question to that, would we have enough time at this juncture to seek feedback, get enough, make a decision? And then because it is an impact bargain element, going back to the teachers to, excuse me, the WTA to discuss, I mean, I mean, before, you know, Patriots' Day.
I think that, yeah, those are fair questions. I would say to you, if there was, if there was a will of the committee, a desire to, for, for us to reach out, we could do so as quickly as tomorrow, tomorrow is obviously Thursday. But I have to believe that we would probably get some results pretty quickly on this topic. I know I'm starting to get some emails, as you might imagine, and maybe you are as well. I also, back to my conversation over the school today with the WTA president, I mean, I think everyone would want this sorted out as quick as possible. So I do believe that we could, if you were going to make a decision different from what we have in place, I think we could do so at the very first part of next week. And that's what I would suggest we should try and do for everyone's planning.
So if we seek some feedback, we could do it really this week, maybe no later than Monday? And then we could gather again as a committee?
Yep, I would suggest.
Before next Wednesday. Mr. Bjork and then Mr. Ragsdale.
So my thought is if, if this is, this is a timely issue. So I am, I'm inclined to offer a motion that we maintain April vacation. And knowing that if, if the committee wants to have time to reflect on this more, then it will die for lack of a second. But just knowing how timely this is, I would offer that as a motion if anybody's interested in second and if anybody's interested in coming to a decision tonight.
Is there a second? Seeing no second. It looks like we need, thank you. It looks like we need some more information. So I think moving ahead and getting some feedback from the community sounds good. If we could do that quickly in the next couple of days, and then we will reconvene hopefully all of us, but at least a quorum early next week.
Thank you, we will get on that first thing tomorrow.
Mr. Ragsdale, I'm sorry.
One, one last thing that I want to mention is that, and this is, would be most, most true if we went through the entire vacation with learning days, is that, I mean, June 19th, for that being our 185th scheduled day of school, even if we had used, you know, as we essentially have all five school days, that's a fairly early end of school for us. You know, much earlier than is typical, much earlier than it's going to be next year. And if we are cutting that back by four days potentially and talking about getting out on June 15th, then that is much earlier than we and most school districts typically get, typically get out. And it's worth also considering what kind of normal care, childcare options are going to be available at that time. You know, most parents count on, you know, camps and other options being running by the time that school gets out of session. And if we're talking about getting out in mid-June, then that might be a real issue for some families.
Thank you. And Mrs. Burns.
Just to, I, I absolutely validate Mr. Ragsdale's concerns with regards to it, and I completely understand it. I'm, I'm, from what I know, and I think this is what perhaps drives my perspective on this topic and that the larger discussion about us returning to school on May 4th. Considering what I'm seeing in my day job, I don't know what the likelihood is that schools will resume on May 4th. I'm going to be honest with you with regards to how, what's going on in the hospitals. But, and I think maybe that's where my reservation is. But I also wanted to, with, you know, hoping for the best and maybe in May 4th, we can get back to some sort of normalcy. What's the likelihood that, I mean, I know we can get real learning, but how much new learning can occur in such a short timeframe? It is kind of my concern. And that's, I think, I think it, I agree, I think nothing replaces in classroom instruction. And I think it's admirable beyond words, the undertaking that our staff has done to ensure that the remote learning process is robust in, in how it's being delivered to their classes and touching upon with their own students, how each, you know, staff in each school is addressing that. But I'm just, I think my concern is, is I don't, at this juncture, see us, granted, and this is, I hope I'm sincerely wrong, starting on May 4th, considering the larger picture, what's happening in the world and in society at this time. So that's kind of my concern that I think maybe I'm playing that, I'm being over cautious and that's kind of where my perspective is with working through April vacation. I just, I mean, there's so many repercussions from one decision that can occur that impacts our students especially, along with our families and our staff. And so that's, that's my two cents.
And I think it's really important to, if, if teachers are really interested in going full steam ahead, then I do think we need to think about that too. I mean, this is, this is the work they're doing and I think we need to honor that. So if there is this feeling that Dr. Brand has from the teachers that they would like to keep going, that they feel like they're going to be into a little bit of a routine by then, then I think we need to think that through before we, we make a decision. I also, I think about all the changes our children have been through and just how, how tumultuous this has been for, for the kids. So the less transition we can make, probably, probably better. Obviously, April vacation is not what it was going to be intended to for these, for children. And they're, where they're traveling or doing whatever, you know, it's not going to look like that. So I think if they can have a Zoom on Wednesday or Thursday with their classroom teacher and feel a sense of community, I think that's probably pretty important. But I think let's gather some feedback and then we'll, we'll go from there.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bryson.
Thank you. Item 7B, also there's an item in your packet and I'll speak to briefly, but the Commissioner Riley's letter to families dated, I believe it was March the 30th on COVID-19. There has been an awful lot of conversation within between the commissioner and, and my colleagues and district leaders throughout, throughout the state during this time, as you probably can imagine. The commissioner, though, did issue some information to our families. We sent that out and we posted that under, under our COVID-19 section of our website and it's also again in your packet. But I did think it would be important, and this is particularly in thought of our community that is perhaps watching this evening, just to sort of highlight some of the key tenets and parts of that update that Commissioner Riley provided to families. There are really three primary principles that he has stressed in his communications with superintendents across the state. First, that health, safety and wellness are indeed the top priorities right now. And I do think we would all agree that the learning is not important. Some efforts to try and maintain some, some degree of normalcy, but health, safety and wellness of our students, of our staff, and of course of our families is the top, is the top priority. Schools should be mindful of equity concerns. And this was, this is, you know, broadly defined in equity of access, equity of opportunity. And we are ourselves in Wilmington trying to contend with that and think deeply about that. And to try and maintain connections between school staff and students and as well, of course, helping all students continue their learning. Based on those three pri, three priorities or principles that he outlined, I just thought it would be insightful to provide, to provide our community with a couple of updates that underscore our commitment and our work towards those ends. First off, food services. A tremendous, huge thank you and shout outs to Mary Phelan of Food Services and her staff. As some of our, some of our committee knows, as our committee certainly is aware, three weeks ago, Mary and her staff began feeding literally hundreds of students three times a week, on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. Distribution center is at the high school. They are grab and go meals, literally curbside delivery. And here's just a couple of, well, there's a few numbers here. Thanks to Paul for pulling these together for me, but there's a bin since this program started. So over the course of nine days, an average of 204 bagged meals, so 204 bags served. So that's equivalent of 204 students. That's totaled 816 meals per each of those three days. The last four days, there's been 376 bags that have been picked up or approximately 1,500 meals. And most recently, 451 bags that were filled out for a total of 1,800 meals. So this program is growing every time it's up and running. It's been in operation two days this week with another to go on Friday. And again, I know that there's been an outpouring of support from Mary and Food Services and we are so grateful for her effort. A second area around technology. Thank you to Ken Lord and his staff. Ken is, as you know, our Director of Technology and Digital Learning. His team has come together over the last two weeks and gathered, cleaned, readied and deployed to date 197 Google Chromebooks with another 25 scheduled to go out tomorrow. And these are to our elementary families. Obviously, we have Chromebooks for our secondary students, but it's well understood that not every family perhaps has access to a device. And so we are specifically targeting our elementary children who we know and who have identified themselves as a device. So thank you to Ken and his efforts. And finally, on the note of trying to foster and maintain connections within between students and staff, there are far too many to be able to share with you, and I know many of you have shared yourself with me examples of what your children may be experiencing. But just a couple of examples, a quick stop around the district. At the West, Bonnie Grassi set up a time for Read Aloud book. And they're recording themselves using Flipgrid and moving through a chapter per day, per day that students are, are playing at their leisure. Renee Shen, I hope I'm pronouncing the last name correctly, composed a video as an outreach to parents and students. And these links have been flying around on YouTube. We actually have a number of examples of videos. The Beltwell staff as a whole recently produced a video for their families and their students. Miss Berry, their videotapes herself singing songs and she's sharing that with her students with, on a regular basis. At the middle school, there are 27 different staff members who will be reading a chapter a day to students. And that's the WMS One Book One Read of Masterminds as just as an example. At the high school, social workers have been reaching out to students and setting up virtual counseling sessions, students the meeting with administration via Zoom around setting up some Instagram platforms. And they are also in the process of planning a virtual spirit week. So there are lots of examples of us trying to meaningfully foster connections and maintain. Um, so there are lots of examples of us trying to meaningfully foster connections and maintain, uh, these deep roots with our students during this time. Uh, and so I just wanted to, to acknowledge that. Um, the, the third principle obviously centers around remote learning. Um, and that is the specific phrase that the Commissioner phrases, that the Commissioner's been using and the direction that he's provided to districts. Um, that it is expected that districts, public school districts are, uh, have developed and will employ a remote learning plan with tools and materials to develop and provide students with appropriate ways to keep learning during this time of school closure. I think it's really important for, uh, members of our community to keep in mind that the Commissioner did not provide one specific learning plan for everybody. Um, this also is a local decision. Um, and thus because of that, it does not look the same from us to Tewksbury to Reading to North Reading or Andover. There's no one template that's being used. Um, and every approach may be slightly different. Recommend, recommendations about the remote learning plan include schools supporting students to engage in meaningful and productive learning. Uh, that remote learning focus on reinforcement of skills already taught this year. Um, obviously that individual student experiences are going to vary depending on the reach individual and family needs during this health crisis and access and capacity to learn. As well, um, that the time is expected by the Commissioner to be approximately half of the school day in which students would be engaged in learning activities. And I just want to make sure that our, our community does understand that, that we are with our learning plan, certainly following the guidance provided by the Commissioner. Um, and it cannot be, uh, the equivalent of, of course, of six hours a day. Um, and so just some, some salient pieces. Again, this is, it's a lengthy memo from the Commissioner. Uh, it is available in multiple places and for members of our community who might be curious in terms of, um, exactly where the Department of Education lies as it relates to all of this, I would just, I would just point that out. I'll pause there, uh, should you have any questions about, about that specific item or our efforts more broadly.
Thank you.
Just a quick question of clarification. You mentioned the Food Services will be handing out meals on Friday. Are they in fact doing this Friday where it's a holiday?
Yes, they are.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the committee? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Um, seven C, uh, related outsourced operational services update. I am going to, uh, turn this over to Paul.
Thank you. Um, I did, uh, send you a memo. Um, a lot has changed since I wrote that and sent that along. So just to bring you up to speed, um, back on March 27th, the Commissioner, uh, of Education had sent out and on the desktop, um, talking about, one of the items was outsourced operational services. And within that, um, letter, um, he had said that we expect school districts to continue payments for outsourced operational services that are needed to ensure continuity of essential services when schools reopen. These services include, but are not limited to transportation, custodial and food services. So with that, we've actually had three conference calls with Jay Sullivan from the, uh, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, just talking about this, um, item. We had two, uh, related to yellow bus or general education transportation in one for out of district special education transportation. And through those, uh, meetings, Jay had asked districts that use a certain vendor, if you could get together and try to negotiate a rate going forward so that we can ensure that these companies stay in business, hopefully don't lay off their employees and so forth. Because if we come back March, uh, May 4th, if a company laid off their employees now, they may have difficulty, you know, hiring them back or getting them back. So we, as I'm sure you know, uh, North Reading Transportation is our yellow bus vendor, as well as SEEM Collaborative has the contract for about 11 districts for out of district transportation. So North Reading Transportation is our vendor for both of those areas. I've been in, uh, we've had a bunch of meetings with, we'll start with the SEEM Collaborative districts. And, um, SEEM will be negotiating with North Reading Transportation for a potentially different rate or a lower rate going forward. So we've had a bunch of meetings. We actually met with the President of North Reading Transportation, John McCarthy. I think it was yesterday, or the day before, every day seems to run into each other, uh, just to talk to him about his costs and so forth and his plans and where he was. Um, we also had, um, so that was with the SEEM group. There's about 24 roughly districts that contract with North Reading Transportation for the yellow bus. We've met a few times and we actually met with Mr. McCarthy again, that was yesterday, again, to talk to him. So we're negotiating as a group, both for the SEEM Collaborative as well as the yellow bus uh, transportation, as Jay had, uh, kind of told us that probably the best way to do that. So we're still in the process of negotiations. Um, it's going pretty well, but there is a concern with really the continuity of service. Uh, how can we, um, make sure that these companies kind of stay in business and they're there, they're on call for us if we need them for any reason? And when, when school reopens, they're there for us. Um, so I do have a couple of motions. You don't have them in your packet, but this is kind of like caught off the press. Um, one other bit of information, I do have another meeting tomorrow with the yellow bus districts, uh, to talk once again about, um, how we're moving forward. Um, so I do have a couple of recommended motions. Um, I could say them now or I could take any questions that you have.
Um, questions first? None. Okay. All right. No, I don't see any. Mr. Rogério, do you want to, would you like to read those motions?
Yes, please. So, recommend in motion, move that the school committee vote to approve special education transportation payments as renegotiated by the SEEM Collaborative during the school closure period in order to ensure continuity of services unless otherwise required by law.
Mrs. Burns?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fennelly. All in favor? It's unanimous. Tristan?
Thank you. The second recommended motion, move that the school committee vote to approve general education transportation payments as renegotiated by the districts that currently contract with North Reading Transportation during the school closure period in order to ensure continuity of services unless otherwise required by law.
Mr. Vaxdale?
So moved.
Mrs. Burns?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Tristan, that's unanimous.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Um, and finally, uh, item seven, uh, AD under COVID-19 update, uh, payment of salary to hourly employees during school closure. Uh, you will find, uh, this was, uh, added to your packet, uh, earlier today. Um, so I'll draw your attention to this. Um, as the, the committee will recall, uh, you, you took action on this to authorize the district to continue to pay, um, our salary to hourly employees who are in active status at the time of our closure, the first closure, through until, uh, until actually the end of last week. Uh, with this extended closure recently announced by Governor Baker, uh, that will extend through until May 1st, um, we are, uh, at a necessity, uh, needing to come back to you to, uh, seek your direction in terms of determining how we are going to deal with our, our personnel as it relates to salary and benefits. Um, it, it is both my recommendation as well as the Commissioner of Education's that, uh, districts, including our own, would continue to pay salary to inactive employees during this time. And so I'm looking for, uh, your vote on this matter.
Someone like to read the motion? Mr. Vaxdale?
Uh, make a motion to approve the continuation of payments to our salaried and hourly employees who are in active status during the period when the Wilmington Public Schools are closed due to coronavirus-related issues per the governor's order from March 31st, 2020 through May 1st, 2020, and pay their regular compensation and benefits unless otherwise required by law.
Thank you. Is there a second, Mr. Fennelly? Thank you. All in favor? It's unanimous. Tristan, thank you.
And, and if I may, um, uh, just before going on to the next item, um, just a couple of concluding thoughts on COVID-19. I know that this is an awful lot of information packed in here, uh, to share, to share with you and the community. Um, I, uh, I'm reminded each day, uh, that we are asking our staff to step up and engage in this important work. Uh, many, as you well know, are parents themselves, uh, caregivers, and also trying to navigate the best they can, this new reality that's, uh, that's upon us all. And so I do want to acknowledge and thank them for, for all of their collective efforts, uh, in getting us up and running and, and, and making those efforts to reach out to staff and families that I know are having and engaging throughout the district. I do want to also extend my thanks to our principals and central office team. Uh, they too have been working extremely hard, particularly in this last week and a half, trying to get our plan in place and up and running. And also, uh, my thanks to the ETA leadership for partnering with us uh, every step of the way. And finally, to our school committee, uh, for your support, uh, your extensive amount of time. Yeah, boy, if our community only knew the amount of time that you also have been putting in, uh, to this COVID-19 situation behind the scenes and for your unyielding advocacy for our students and families. Uh, thank you all. Uh, we will, we will make our way through this, uh, this time, but it's, uh, it's great to have, uh, the collective efforts of everybody. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, school choice vote, uh, a completely different subject, but, uh, in the spirit of trying to move on with the regular type of business that we otherwise would be, um, seven B, uh, uh, there is a memo in your packet. Um, this is nothing new. This is not related to COVID-19. Uh, this is an annual action that public school districts in Massachusetts must take. Uh, and, uh, that is in relationship to, uh, making a decision about school choice. Um, indeed, there are a number of different reasons for which a community, a school committee may consider allowing students to join a district that are not residents of Wilmington. Um, but, um, certainly there are similarly, uh, other factors at play too that, um, may be so inclined for districts not to participate in school choice. I'll, uh, draw to your attention and as a point of reminder that in recent years, the Committee of Wilmington has decided not to participate in the school choice program, uh, in part due to the lack of available space for students outside Wilmington, particularly, I would say, at the elementary level. Um, I also think that it's, uh, it is the reality before us that we're contending with the possibilities of building renovation, construction, uh, and the like. And so to that end, uh, at this point in time, it would be my recommendation that we, uh, continue to, uh, consider, uh, school choice in that light. We are, uh, seeking your, uh, your action though on this, uh, and there's a recommended motion for you, but I'm happy to take any questions should you have.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Vaxdale?
Uh, I just want to, I think, reemphasize that we, often when we discuss the school choice issue, you know, we talk about whether there's, you know, space. And at the same time, you know, we've had a lot of conversations this year about our declining enrollment. And, uh, I think that, you know, there, there might be, some people might see a little bit of a, you know, a contradiction in that or a paradox. And so I, I think that, that it's probably best to emphasize, again, that first of all, it's not just every and all our schools, um, that we see the, the declining enrollment. Um, but furthermore, that it's really about an uncertainty. And as Dr. Brand said, that with, you know, with possible, you know, consolidation or construction, um, that we really have a certain uncertainty about, you know, how our schools are going to be configured. And, uh, and that it's not just as simple as, oh, because we have a declining enrollment, that therefore there is now space, that it's a much more complicated issue than that. And, uh, that we, we, you know, have chosen in the past and I think would also choose again this year, simply not to add this, um, to, to our plate.
Thank you. Other comments? Someone like to read the motion? Just Maha? Thank you.
Um, I move that the Wilmington School Committee vote to not participate in the state school choice program because of a lack of available space to accommodate out of town students.
Thank you. Second, Mrs. Newhouse? All right. Thank you. All in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you. Uh, the next item, Personnel Update, uh, seven C, there's a very brief, um, uh, update from Mr. Stern Armstrong in your packet. With, um, again, information that would, would have otherwise been delivered to you, uh, earlier in March, but we nevertheless wanted to still provide this, uh, to you. Uh, it, it, it does not have any specific bearing right now given the circumstances. But, uh, nevertheless, it was prepared and so we wanted to bring that to your attention. Uh, and then eight D, uh, sorry, seven D, uh, the annual town report, uh, is informational, uh, a copy of which is, uh, also in the packet. And this is the information that, um, uh, has been prepared for the, uh, town, the 2019 town report this year. And then finally, uh, if I may, FY20 financial report, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rogério.
Thank you. So, um, you have the financial report as of March 20th, 2020. Uh, our total appropriation of budget is $41,939,603. And we spent and encumbered, I don't have that total, but, uh, right now, we're, we're in the black at, uh, $714,478.31. Uh, so we're in very good shape for this time of the year. I'm very comfortable where we are and we are, um, you know, tracking everything very closely as we move through this, you know, crazy period of time and so forth. But, um, I'm very comfortable with where we are at this point and will end the year, uh, where we need to end the year.
Questions or comments from the committee about any of those last three items? Mr. Vaxdale?
Uh, I just wanted to know if there had been any conversations with the town, uh, about whether we have, you know, projected less, uh, you know, town revenue because of the economic downturn and how that might affect our budget.
Um, I did speak to the town accountant today. We did not, um, get into that. So we didn't indicate anything there. I know in a, um, I was in a Masbo, my association, uh, webinar, if you will, today and state revenues are down quite a bit. Again, they didn't know anything about any, uh, nine C cuts or what impact it will be in next year's budget. So we haven't heard anything from the state level, nor have I heard anything from, uh, the town at this point. That's kind of where we stand, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rogério. Other comments or questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to eight other reports. Are there any subcommittee reports?
No, I, um, I would like to just bring forth to the board that there's, um, a lot of discussion and advocating at the moment from school committees around the, um, state to state legislatures, state legislators, um, with respects to MCAS. Um, at this time, I know Commissioner O'Reilly hasn't, uh, if I'm correct, hasn't made a formal decision as to whether or not they would, um, postpone MCAS for this year, um, or still have it in some, uh, capacity. Um, and I know that, um, the association, well, I wouldn't say the association, but I know that there is a strong advocacy to reach out to, you know, you know, state senators and, uh, representatives to advocate to, um, postpone or cancel the MCAS testing for this year, um, in light of the current situation. Um, and, uh, you know, avenues that schools have taken, you know, with, regarding this pandemic. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and, uh, I guess, again, refer you back to the MASC list server too for additional information if you're interested.
Thank you. Mr. Vaxdale?
And I, I can speak to that briefly, that the, the legislation that Governor Baker filed, uh, was to give the Commissioner and the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education discretion in modifying or waiving the competency determination or MCAS testing, uh, in general. Um, it's also, we also had a federal waiver which has now been approved. So the U.S. Department of Education has approved Massachusetts' waiver from, uh, state testing under the Every Student Succeeds Act. Um, but as Mrs. Burns says, there is some legislative efforts to potentially just at the legislative level to cancel MCAS. But so far, the legislature seems still to be inclined to leave that as a matter of discretion for the Commissioner and the Board. But it'll all depend on what legislation ends up on Governor Baker's desk.
Thank you, David, for that clarity.
Thank you, David, for that clarity.
Thank you very much. Any other subcommittee reports? Mr. Vaxdale?
Just briefly want to report that the School Start Times Committee is continuing its work through email and collaboration, and I don't think we've had any Zoom calls yet, or at least I haven't been on them. But, but that work is still going forward.
Excellent. That's good to hear. Thank you. Any other reports? Mrs. Burns, any correspondence?
And this evening.
Okay. So that brings us to future school committee dates and notable agenda items. So our next regular session is April 29th, 2020, and following that, we'll have May 13th, 2020. Obviously, April 29th will be in a Zoom format, and we will see about May 13th. As we discussed earlier, look, we'll be sending something out about a potential, a meeting sometime early next week to think through the, and vote on the April break discussion that we had earlier. And then just a couple of quick reminders, the meet and greet for the West Principal Search by Zoom tomorrow. So parents, the West, the Shot Sheen, the Boutwell, block off 4:00 to 5:15. I think that would be really important and informative for you to be a part of that. Thank you to Allison Hurst for your public comment, and we do encourage others to provide comments in this format for our next meeting. And just to echo Dr. Brand's thank yous, I think he thanked everybody. Obviously, we thank you, Dr. Brand, for your leadership and the countless hours that you have devoted to, to our children and our teachers and our, and our town. So I think I've sent a couple of things out that just say, we are thinking of you, and we know how just unbelievable this time is, and we're, we're grateful that you are leading us through this. Thank you to the teachers, the, your leadership team for their diligence and flexibility as we implement this new plan just this week. We know that there are kinks to iron out, and we do encourage you to reach out to, to your teachers and to your, your building leaders if there is something that is just really not working, so that people can figure out what makes the most sense for, for the classes and for the kids. Obviously, you already mentioned our food service team, but distributing over 1,200 meals, and then to Ken Lord and his team and our Chromebooks at 222 Chromebooks. And that does mean, everybody, that those folks are coming in and they're cleaning and they're putting themselves at risk to make sure that our, our children have what they need. And so the buildings, although they are not, you know, we're not in them, but we're, we're still taking care of those sorts of things. People are still going in and signing off at the Roman House, and all of those things are still business as usual in some ways. So we do thank them for continuing to, to have to go out to provide for our kids. So, and with that, does anyone else want to have any, make any comments or?
Just a thank you also to the Wilmington families and students who are showing so much, you know, patience as we roll out this new remote learning plan and, you know, keeping, keeping their kids safe and keeping our community together while we do this.
Yeah. It is a good place to live, and so good luck to everyone. Stay safe, be well. I think there's one final motion. Someone like to make the adjournment? Mrs. Burns?
Like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. A second? Newhouse? All in favor? Tristan, that is unanimous.